He is here and he's in his uniform.
Perfect. That's perfect. That's the way to go out. Uniform.
He's always so impressive.
That's the way it should be.
One of the first times I saw him, he was teasing me. And he approached like he was arresting me or something harassing me. I said, "You are so scary when you're in this."
When he gets into...
Okay, I'm called to order the open session of the Canyon Lake City Council. Before the invocation, I'm going to ask those in the audience that are able to please stand up and for one minute think about our thoughts and prayers for the victims in Las Vegas tragedy. Thank you. Brittany, please. And we'll all stand up anyway.
All right, if you guys would bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we do thank you so much for this evening, Lord. And as we've just had a moment of silence, God, we do pray that you would be with the friends and loved ones of the victims of the tragedy in Las Vegas, Lord. And although it didn't happen in our own city, Lord, it feels awfully close. And there are many, many from Southern California killed sadly, Lord. And so we just ask for your comfort, Lord. We ask for a peace that only you can bring. And we just ask, God, that you would just be with our country, Lord. There is so much tragedy and so much heartache, God. And so I just pray that we would turn towards you, Lord, and that we would see a revival of faith, Lord, and love towards one another, God. Tonight, Lord, I thank you and trust that you're present in this room, God. And I've had the privilege of delivering many invocations for the City Hall meeting, Lord. I know that tonight especially, there are probably some nerves as there's a topic being discussed, Lord, that is widely debated, Lord. And I just pray that your presence would be thick here, God, that there would be peace, God, that you would offer great, great guidance, Lord, and wisdom. I pray, Lord, specifically for our council members, Lord, that they would be led by you in their votes and decision-making, God, that your will would be done here. And we thank you for the beautiful city that we're blessed to live in, Lord. Canyon Lake really is a gem. And we just pray that you would protect the city, Lord, protect the citizens of the city, Lord. And I do pray, God, that even as differences of opinions may be shared this evening, God, that they would be spoken calmly, Lord, and that everyone would have ears to listen, Lord, and just hearts to receive, God. And we trust, Lord, that your will would be done here in our city. We love you and we trust you, and it's in your son's name that we pray. Amen.
Well, Lieutenant Q is the last City Council meeting he's going to be at, so I'm going to ask to lead the pledge, please.
Put your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Hagerty.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Bonner.
Here.
Okay, approval of the City Council agenda?
Mr. Mayor, before we approve the agenda, there's a couple items staff would like to do. First of all, we need to pull item 10.1. There's some language that staff needs to work on with the PACE people, and we'll bring that back to the November meeting. And because of the crowd here, we'd like to move 10.4 to 10.1.
That's a really good idea. So we're going to try to get the business up, done, and so then the other things you can stay if you want to, but you don't have to. So, okay, so based on that change, can I have approval with the changes?
I sell proof.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Okay, now, being a council member, this is the fun things to do, and that's to make presentations people that are special in our community. So the first one is going to be a proclamation for the Bombshells Boutique. And is the person here?
So this is the City of Canyon Lake proclamation honoring Bombshells and the recognition of their achievement. Whereas Bombshells has been named favorite California boutique by the 2017 Global Boutique Awards, and whereas Bombshells competed with 4,000 other boutiques and was the only California boutique to make the final two in categories. And whereas the Global Boutique Awards celebrates boutiques and specialty stores, whether online, mobile, or brick or mortar, who are the lifeblood of cities of all sizes around the world. And whereas the mission of the Global Boutique Awards is to give consumers around the world the opportunity to celebrate their favorite boutiques from all 50 states, Canada, Australia, and the United Kingdom. Whereas Bombshells is owned by sisters Stephanie Stout and Joanna Granados, whose parents have been Canyon Lake residents since 1982, and Stephanie was born and raised in Canyon Lake. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake do hereby extend their congratulations to Stephanie Stout and Joanna Granados, owners of Bombshell, on their accomplishments and wish them the best in the future endeavors.
Think about the size of Canyon Lake and the town center and have someone be honored as the California boutique leader is pretty sufficient. And so maybe you could give us a little background of how you were able to get that achieved. Microphone?
You can pull it towards your microphone.
We are highly involved in the boutique community across the U.S. So we have boutique friends that we've become friends, boutique owners that we've become friends with and just are involved in so many different aspects of the boutique community. And we really wanted to put Canyon Lake on the map. So Canyon Lake, I was born and raised here. It's close to my heart. It was something that we wanted to do. And really, we won this because of you guys. We had so many votes from the Canyon Lake community and surrounding communities. We couldn't really have done it without you, so we're super thankful for that and love Canyon Lake and have no intentions of leaving. Thank you.
Do you know?
No. The Darrell from Senator Stone's office.
Darrell's here? Oh, right here. You're going to make a presentation?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I smell a lake.
Okay, get in the way of noise. My name is Darrell Coniston, and I'm with Senator Stone's office. And Senator has sent you congratulations and a certificate of recognition presented. A certificate of recognition presented to the Bombshells in honor of being selected as the 2017 California Boutique of the Year. As your senator, he wants to congratulate you on being chosen as the 2017 California Boutique of the Year. With an honor, with an honor, it is so, it is to have clothing and accessories stored in such stores, in such a district as the 28th Senate District. Please accept his and our sincere appreciation, wish you much luck in the future.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Hey, can we see it over here?
Yeah. Look for the camera.
You want to see it back?
Hi, I'm Caitlin. I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Melissa Van Ness. All right, and we also just want to congratulate you, and that is a huge accomplishment, especially, you know, from somebody here, as the mayor said, in Canyon Lake, and putting us on the map. And we're just so grateful that you are in our district and that we are able to honor you. So on behalf of the Assemblywoman, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Where's Jim Randall? Back here.
You too? I love you tonight.
Hello, I'm Jim Randall. I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce in Canyon Lake. And to be honest with you, to have a small business succeed the way they have really makes my job easier. How's that? So first off, this is from Kevin Jeffries. He couldn't make it here tonight. Certificate of recognition, Bombshells, congratulations on being named 2017 California Boutique of the Year by Boutique Hub. That's from Kevin Jeffries. Ken Calvert's office, I, it's in the mail. That's all I can tell you. This is from the Chamber of Commerce, award of excellence presented to Bombshells in honor of being selected California Boutique of the Year. We are proud to recognize your dedication, commitment to our community. Congratulations on your achievement. We wish you more years of continued success.
Okay, Lieutenant.
Are you done with this?
Yep. Lieutenant Q.
This is the City of Canyon Lake proclamation honoring Lieutenant Earl Quinata for his recognition of service. Whereas Lieutenant Earl Quinata has been a member of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, has worked for 19 years of his career providing law enforcement services since January 9th, 2014, and has provided his law enforcement leadership at the Paris Station, overseeing the contract with the City of Canyon Lake. And whereas while Lieutenant Earl Quinata was employed by the Riverside County Sheriff's Department as a deputy sheriff, promoted to the ranks of corporal, sergeant, and lieutenant, his duties included patrol, detention, administration, and special assignments. Whereas Lieutenant Earl Quinata's significant accomplishments to the City of Canyon Lake have been in the areas of customer service and law enforcement relationships. Lieutenant Quinata has always gone the extra mile with his relationship with the Property Owners Association and the business community. And whereas Lieutenant Earl Quinata has been dedicated and committed to the City of Canyon Lake's safety and protection and always putting the best interests of Canyon Lake first. And now let it therefore resolve that the City Council of the City Canyon Lake does here honor Lieutenant Earl Quinata for his service, dedication, and commitment to making the City of Canyon Lake a safe place to live and play.
Well, actually, we had another ward, our chief, Ford, was just promoted to deputy chief. So, but he had a commitment this afternoon, so he wasn't able to make it here. So I'll give the plaque to you in the proclamation. One thing I can easily do is talk about Lieutenant Q. I've been with over four years, plus or minus four years. And he is a person that recognized that Canyon Lake has something very similar where the members of the property owners and the citizens are basically the same people. So he's learned how to communicate with both sides, and we got results because of that. And I was talking to the new captain upstairs a few minutes ago, and what I want more than anything else, Lee Lieutenant, is that you pass that message to the new lieutenant, because it's really important. And all our crime went down the last four years, and it stayed pretty low, and we want to continue that way. So thank you, everything you've done, and it's incredible.
Thank you.
So let me give you the...
May I?
Yes, please.
Complete, okay. Really quick. Almost to the date, I was transferred from the Tribalese on Unit four years ago, roughly around, I almost want to say yesterday, when I, you know, given the opportunity from our sheriff as I got transferred, and I had leadership with my captains, from Captain Judge to Captain Ford, now Chief Ford, and now I have Captain Fellows. They all said, "Hey, stay with Canyon Lake because I decided," and I've made some headway in relationship building. One thing I've always wanted to preach, and I've pushed a lot of narrative to the community about calling 911, Securitas is, you know, ancillary part of us, Neighborhood Watch, all these things were crime prevention strategies and models that have been used throughout. I know that we have 11,000-plus people here. I want everybody to know, I was very proud to be the lieutenant, the acting chief of Canyon Lake for the last four years. And with that, I had one primary goal, and that goal was for and only for the community residents. I always wanted to make sure that, you know, when someone would come up, what's wrong? I would deploy resources and I would manage that. Any kind of policy issues I get with my captains. But first and foremost, it was the great community, and there's a lot of great people in this lake. And I appreciate the time that I was able to spend. And hopefully, we'll get the new lieutenant in, and we'll continue the model so he can make it greater. Thank you very much.
Okay, Captain Fellows, could you come up, please?
The captain just recently got promoted from lieutenant to captain, and he was at the Paris Station, and so he's got experience with Canyon Lake as part of the Paris Station. And he's really close to Chief, now Chief Ford, and knows him well. And he has a good acquaintance with the lieutenant. So that's what we were talking about earlier today. And the things that we work well, the roundtable we had, we talked to each other, is very important. And that's why, if you could just give some words about your background, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and community members. It's an absolute privilege and honor to stand before you tonight as your new police chief. I have taken over command of the Paris Station that includes three contract cities as well as five county communities. But first, I'd like to thank my good friend Earl. He's been a great colleague for many, many years, dating back to when he was one of our press information officers. We interacted for many, many years, and I finally had an opportunity to actually work with him on a day-to-day basis. He's been a great leader at the station. He's been a great mentor at the station. I'm going to miss him a lot. His replacement is going to have some huge shoes to fill, obviously. There's been some amazing strides in the City of Canyon Lake, and we're going to continue that. So Earl, I wish you great success in your retirement. Please try not to send me too many photos of laying by the pool and all that stuff. I'd appreciate it.
I'll do it every other day.
Right on. But I'd like to let, yeah, I'd like to let everyone know that my commitment to every stakeholder group, whether it's a POA or public agencies, Rotary, I want to make sure that everyone understands that we all have something to bring to the table. And the way that I see it is that we are all part of an all-star team. Unlike baseball, however, their goal is to win a game, all right? Part of this all-star team includes me, City Council, each of you, businesses, other organizations. We're all effective stakeholders on this team. And what we want to do is we want to try and accomplish tasks and reach our goals and work together to do it. So we're all on the same team. We're all part of this all-star team. And I want to make sure that you understand that we are going to accomplish this through target, precision, supervision, crime prevention, education, and traffic enforcement. All of us in this room has some sort of expertise to bring to the community. As the mayor indicated, Captain Ford, now Chief Ford, was promoted to chief deputy. And the good news is, he's still going to be over our umbrella. So he still has the Paris Station command under his responsibility. And I'll just tell you very briefly about myself. I know there's some other things we've got to get to tonight. I'm going to be going on my 28th year in law enforcement. I started back in 1990. I worked for an agency in Los Angeles County for six years, moved out to the Inland Empire and got tired of the drive very, very quickly. So I transferred out to Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Most of my background is in investigations and internal affairs. And Chief Ford and I kind of followed each other around for the past several years, working at our Moreno Valley Station, our Internal Affairs, and now the Paris Station. So our philosophy is based on policy procedure, community involvement, and accessibility. I want to make sure that everyone knows that they all have access to your chief of police. So if you ever have a question, you have a comment, anything that I can do, you can send me an email. My information will be made available to everyone. I look forward to this challenge, and I really appreciate the confidence and support that I've received thus far. And I look forward to meeting each and every one of you and talk to you more about things. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, we're not quite done yet. Every month, starting in September through May, we have a student of the month. Every high school is, it's Lake Elsner United School District, there's three high schools. Two people are nominated. And then Ortega Highway High School is one person. And almost every month, we have at least one person from Canyon Lake. And we're really privileged this time. So if I can have Caitlin come forward, please? Ashlyn, I'm sorry, Ashlyn. Well, Ashlyn, I have to tell you, first of all, thank you. Is there anything to...
Talk to the mic so that it gets recorded. Oh, there's something.
I think you got one just like a second there.
Thank you.
I was unfortunate. I make the presentation all the mayors at this monthly meeting, and then I had a doctor appointment, so I wasn't able to stay around long enough to talk to and hear your comments. So maybe you could take two, three minutes and tell us a little bit about your background. And then maybe one of your parents want to come and talk about your family.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashlyn Dowell, and I'm 17 years old. And I was born here and raised in Canyon Lake, and I've lived here my whole life. I go to Temescal Canyon High School now, and I'm involved in a lot of clubs there. The one that has impacted me the most is I'm the president of Interact Club. And through that, I've learned a lot about service and how you can help your community. And seeing everyone united in this community and working together to make it better is just super inspiring because that's something that, like, I'm hopeful that I can take on into my future and serve my community throughout my life. And I love that everyone's really involved here. So I feel like I was fortunate to grow up in this community where I've been able to see that for my whole life.
I'll keep it brief. I learned on the drive over that I should be prepared to say something, so. I want to thank the mayor and the council. It's a unique honor to see your child awarded, if you will, for any of their accomplishments. She's, you know, she was raised and, born and raised here in Canyon Lake. Mother and I moved out here 20 years ago, and less than a year and a half later, we found out triplets were on the way, and Ashlyn was one of those three. You know, 10 weeks after that, they were born, and our house was suddenly too small. So, you know, they played in every corner of Canyon Lake and raised here. You know, their mother's a teacher, and you pray every day that you're doing your best in parenting, and you pour into them. And you hope and you pray that they turn out the young men and women, the woman that this one's become, and my boys as well. I don't want to ignore them. So I want to thank the city for honoring my daughter. It's a proud moment for us and Ashlyn, I know. Thank you.
Okay, next we have comments from the Chamber of Commerce. Jim Randall, you still in the room?
Yep.
Vice Mayor, Council, that's a tough act to follow.
Vice Mayor, Council, that's a tough act to follow. Oh, this was written at dinner by somebody, and let's get down to the good stuff. Annual Oktoberfest last Saturday. I wish Mayor Bonner was in here. I sit on the roundtable and we're always talking about improving, getting more people into the town center. Well, I think we did it Saturday night. Most of the people that I spoke to Saturday night were not Canyon Lakers. They were from Audi Murphy, Quail Valley, Canyon Hills, I mean, it was great, absolutely great. And a lot of people said, we didn't know all this was here, you know? So anyhow, I want to thank all the volunteers that helped out, and it was a long day. I started at 10:30 Saturday morning, I think I got home a little bit before 11:30 Saturday night. So, next year we're gonna find more volunteers. This are, November 20, or October 28th, I beg your pardon, October 28th, our 25th Annual Parade of Frights. Last year, we had 52 participants in as far as businesses that participated. I don't see that we'll be short of that. We want everyone to bring their kids out in costumes, we got the treasure hunt, the costume contest, the costume parade, Thunder from the Storm will be there. It's always a lot of fun, a lot of fun. And it's a good start on Halloween for the kids. You hit 52 businesses collecting candy, you got a pretty good bag going into Halloween. The other item, oh, she ran out of room. One other item, we are, I don't know if many of you remember, about three-years ago, we had a Small Business Saturday. We're gonna try it again this year. We hope to try it again this year, we'll get information out on it, but it's the Saturday following Thanksgiving, right after Black Friday. So hopefully that'll be a success again. Anyhow, that's all we have, thank you.
Yeah, Jim, before, on the 16th and 17th, at 8 o'clock, we'd like to have the roundtable at Cup of Buck, okay? Because the country club is gonna be closed both of those days. And then I'm gonna have a meeting with a young gentleman that's looking for, talking about going to Naval Academy, and with my background, I'm gonna, if I'm gonna use your room, I'm gonna use the same purpose. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments, Stephanie, please?
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is to ask to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. City council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on an agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time the particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note if you're addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items, so therefore the city council may only do the following: refer the matter back to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give very limited factual response.
Okay, one of the people that'd like to speak is Nancy Horton. And Nancy, I apologize, we don't have a chair for you up there.
Nancy Horton, Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, Division 1. Elsinore Valley is not taking any water out of Canyon Lake, has not been for two months and will not be taking any water out of Canyon Lake, at least until the new year, after what we hope will be many rainstorms. All of our wells are shut down, we are using water that's called Inlu Water from Metropolitan Water District, and it is, I'm told, cheaper. It's imported water, but it's cheaper than what we can produce ourselves because they have a lot that's available. Second thing is, the ALM treatments took place last week, that was very uneventful and went very, very well. I wanted to correct one thing that was in the Friday Flyer that was not quite accurate. The original $500,000 grant that we received in December of 2012 for our ALM treatments was to provide two treatments a year, and each treatment is around $100,000. When that money was used up, that was three treatments ago, the Santa Ana River Water Quality Review Board said, we must continue those treatments in Canyon Lake to reduce phosphorus, reduce nitrogen, reduce chlorophyll A, and increase dissolved oxygen. So the total maximum daily load task force, of which the city is a member and our water district is a member, voted to pay for two treatments a year in Canyon Lake, and that's how these treatments are being paid for. So we have, we're supposed to bring those amounts down by the year 2020, we're well on our way to doing that because of the success of the ALM treatments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Jack Wamsley.
Reason I'm here tonight, to try to run through something real quickly and bring everybody up to date, what we've been doing. A couple of months ago, I recommended that we work on a emergency plan with reference to the golf course. We've had a couple of people over the past few years go down with a heart attack, and one of the biggest problems is getting the person from there to the fire department or the ambulance. So my recommendation was that we establish a golf cart emergency response cart. And with that, kind of went a week or two and so on, and then I thought, well, I'll go to the manager, which I did, I went to Aaron, I also went to the POA manager and asked him if they would agree that I would go ahead and I would put together a program. And I started on that a couple of weeks ago, very fortunate having some very good people. We divided it into four categories. The first category is to have drone pictures taken of every hole, and the coordination with that hole with the fire department. And that way, when you call in, you would be able to tell them, I'm on the 11th hole and I'm at such and such location, so on and so forth. All of this will be working together with Gary Bradford. Gary Bradford's retired chief, he's also done a lot of these, I've done thousands of them. And Gary's going to be working with the fire department on this particular end of the project. The book will be made up like this, we'll have it for every hole, there'll be a tab for 18 holes, and you can flip to it, have that, you'll have a picture of the deal, and then you'll have the nomenclature on the back. The second phase would be handled with small cards, three-by-five card, and we will provide those with every member in our community that has a golf cart that gets on our golf course. And train them, this card will be an emergency response card, it'll tell you exactly what to do so that we don't have a bunch of people calling and calling the wrong people and having problems. We'll go over that later. The third program would be to have Pat and all of his people trained on this cart, and your councilman Larry Green has agreed to do that, and I think he's already started. And he's going to be training every employee that he has, so that they know, they get a call at the clubhouse, we've got a man down on the ninth hole, they're going to be able to go out, get into this cart, and go over and we'll be able to pick this man up. The last thing that we have is the cart itself, and that's been my project. I've talked about four different companies, and kind of settled down on one company.
Jack, try to summarize as quickly as you can, please.
Okay, and anyway, we have, this company has agreed to work with us on it. We redesigned the cart, the normal cart is $18,000 to $20,000. And I've got it down to $15,000 now, and I told him I'd like to work it to 10. And so, anyway, the other thing was to get a gurney that would fit, that we would put on this golf cart. And I talked to AMR today and asked them if they would give us the gurney, and he said, well, Jack, he says, those things are over $10,000. And I said, well, what can you do? He said, wait a minute, and he came back on the phone and he said, okay, I'll give you a cart for your project, but it's gonna cost you. And I said, well, okay, what is it? And he said, I wanna free-for-some for a round of golf on your golf course. And I said, you got it, and I said, we'll throw in lunch. So things are going along pretty good, I hope all of us will be working together on it. We look for, probably, we'll have some prices and so on within the next couple of months at the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the third one is Matt Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, I appreciate you letting me come here tonight and speak to the council and the city and all the residents who are here. I got to speak to most of you briefly before the meeting, and you may have heard then when I mentioned I am running for Congress here in our district. Our district encompasses Corona, Norco, Lake Elsinore, Canyon Lake here, Murrieta, part of Temecula, Menopet, so it's a pretty big area. I'm out in the community, meeting people as much as possible. I was here in Canyon Lake just last week. I went, visited some of the businesses at the town center, did not go to Bombshells, but maybe next time. But I'm starting to get a little familiar with Canyon Lake, I think it's a neat community. I have no idea what's behind those gates yet, but eventually, I'm sure, I'll get a look. But anyway, I do hope to meet a lot of you and speak more in the future. We've had our current congressman, Ken Calvert, there for many, many years, 25-years, and regardless of what he's done in the past, I don't think in recent years he's really provided very good, broad representation for our district. And if you may have noticed on my card, I am an independent, I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, so I don't feel like I want to participate in what the two parties are doing with each other, which is fighting and not putting our people and our country first and solving our problems. So I'm hoping to show a different way for what our country can do, bring people together, and that's the message I'm trying to sell to the people of our district. Anyway, I, so far, I'm really happy to be doing what I'm doing, I've gotten to speak with a lot of great people all across our district, looking forward to meeting people more, and, you know, continuing to be a presence here at different community events. I'm sorry I missed Oktoberfest last weekend, that would've been right up my alley. So, anyway, thank you for your time and thank you, Governor.
Okay, consent calendar, Stephanie, can you read the statement, please?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the city council. A city council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Okay, for the council, does anybody want to pull anything on the consent?
No, Paul. I would suggest we approve as the items on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a real call?
Oh, everybody do a real call.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
There's a list of, a schedule of future events, and if you go to our website or the Friday Flyer, there's pretty well outlined of what the upcoming various meetings are, and so we appreciate any people that would like to come and attend, and there's committees, there's just a number of things that each of our council members have one or two committees that we're involved with. So we look forward to having our citizens be involved. Okay, so now we're getting business items. And as you remember, we pulled 10.1, as our city manager mentioned, and we're moving 10 for up to the first. I'm gonna make one comment, and this is a suggestion, not a recommendation. We could, there's a lot of people that want to talk, and we can be here all night, that's not a problem. But if you listen to the council as they speak, you might get a kind of a indication of what their thought is, and then you decide then, the people that want to speak as citizens can certainly do that, but I think you're gonna find something from each of the council that makes a lot of sense. So with that said, I'm gonna start with, let's see, Aaron Grant, I'm sorry?
Staff.
Oh, okay, staff report, okay.
You have in front of you an ordinance that bans all commercial cannabis activities in the city. That means everything, it means medicinal, it means recreational, it means distribution, cultivation, marketing, processing, laboratory testing, the definition is broad. So what you have is a ban, it is not permission to open any kind of facility, and it imposes a business license tax requirement on businesses entering the city. You can't, POA can keep them from entering, you can't keep them from entering, who are delivering product to people in the community, from outside of the city.
Can I ask a question? Is that product for recreational use and medicinal use?
Yes.
Or is it one or the other?
Um...
Both?
Do you mean chemically?
No, I mean, is it, if I have a medical card and I call for whatever...
Yes, that applies to both.
That's one source, or if I want to have for recreational use?
Yeah, the answer is yes, it applies to both. Now, the requirements for cultivation, processing, distribution, et cetera, are the same in general for the two types. There are some product differences in terms of chemistry and edibles that I can't really explain to you, but I could show you where they are in the law. There is at present a distinction between a facility which only would sell medicinal marijuana at retail and one which would sell recreational or adult use at retail. At present, because the Bontaville was not, was held in committee, there must be a separation of premises so that you do not, you cannot mix the two retail facilities. Most people believe that will change in the future. Now, let me make a suggestion about the ordinance. You need to have an ordinance in place, whatever it is, by, and effective, by December 31st. The state is engaging in an extremely minimal licensing process, it will be done online, my guess is the background checks will be minimal, they are openly relying on public agencies to take action to regulate their own areas. For example, the license you would get if you applied for a license would be something that they email to you and you print it. So it's not going to be quite like the permanent regulations. So you need an ordinance in place, but the ordinance you put in place doesn't have to always be your ordinance. Many places are agreeing, let's put this in place because we don't know what's going to happen, it looks like the state is gonna be a little slow in getting even their interim regulations done, let's take another look at this in six months, in nine months, in a year, when the permanent regulations come out and the licensing procedures are in place and functioning. Notable among those places are San Francisco and a number of other big places that everyone knows is going to be allowing this, but they just aren't comfortable doing it now. For that reason, we presented to you and we recommend that you do this ban... For that reason, we presented to you and we recommend that you do this ban as a, you have, you can't do a moratorium. It has to be a ban. But that if you want to, see what happens, come back, have another discussion, see how it goes with other places that did allow, for example, medicinal, and see if you wanna change your mind.
Can I get one clarification?
Sure.
Talking about the total ban that we have in place now, we would just be continuing it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It has been modified to match the language of the new law and some other requirements, so, yes.
But this would not keep somebody who has a prescription for medical marijuana from obtaining?
This is a commercial ban.
Okay.
It means it bans retail. No, if you have a card, you have the right to grow your own. If you have, you have a right as person under the Adult Use Act to have six mature plants. You have an ordinance which regulates that as well, which was codified before Prop sixty-four passed and which we have not changed.
Okay.
And not to be repetitive, but what we talked about yesterday, the recreational comes under the commercial side.
Both do. They both come, your ban is for both, medicinal and recreational.
Commercial.
Commercial cannabis activities means both medicinal and recreational.
I was just making sure that if somebody needed to get it, they were still, that was not stopping.
Your ordinance confirms that the city doesn't have the authority and does not regulate the personal use guaranteed by state law.
Okay, any other council? I just wanna ask the question to the city attorney.
Mayor, can I ask a question to the city attorney? I had a meeting the other day, and I discussed with our supervisor, Jeffries, what the county was gonna do, and they're moving to put an ordinance in place and that kinda stuff. But what was brought up, what was interesting, is that one of the cities that's next to us said basically, and we're so small, that the manufacturing and the distribution pretty much precludes us, and that also precludes us from receiving state rebates. Is that correct?
You are. There you go. Yes, but not for that reason. You're precluded for, from receiving state rebates unless you permit cultivation, commercial cultivation, not personal. You don't really have a place, unless you did it in private growhouses. So, yes, you are. Counties, by the way, have some special authorities to, just counties, to put in place a certain kind of tax. There are some that are looking at that. So, yes, I wanna point out that while that sounds bad, no one is sure that there actually will be any money to give out. It's extremely unclear if there will be. That's one of the things you might find out as well. So, the other reason for the ban is that you do not have a source of funding other than marginally increased sales taxes on any adult-use marijuana. There's no sales taxes on medicinal to pay for any increased law enforcement permitting or other costs.
Randy?
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, this ordinance banning commercial would not ban anyone that has a medical card could still have medicinal marijuana delivered to them, or they could grow their own per the state law. This bans commercial growth and selling and all those things that involve money.
In the city.
In the city, yes.
Okay, so let's, either council member, let's talk, councilmember Green, why don't you make your thoughts?
Well, I've really searched this over and over and talked to a lot of our surrounding cities, has also done a lot of research as far as what the four-year history Colorado and Washington, 'cause they've got the most experience. It depends on what news agency you read or what article you read, and it has some large variables to it. A lot more states are going online with it. But since I've looked at our small city and the setback requirements and some of the things, I'm not sure this is gonna fit. And I've looked at some of the problems that have been proposed that could happen, such as additional law enforcement problems, homelessness, other things that people are attracting. Unfortunately, some of the things that have been stated and were stated in the Colorado experience haven't come true in the what, the sense they thought they would. But that doesn't talk about Canyon Lake, so that's kinda where I'm at right now.
Okay, councilmember Aaron Grantz?
If I may, Mayor, you know, I have a reputation for listening before I speak, and I'd like to maintain that reputation right now and hear what everybody has to say, and then I'll tell you what my thoughts and feelings are.
Are you talking about the, are the council member or the audience?
I'm talking about the entire audience.
Okay. Okay, councilmember Hagerty?
I think I've made it clear in the past, and I will make it clear again. I spent a year doing research, talking with various law enforcement people from all around the state, medical caregivers. One in particular was the pediatric, head of pediatrics in Portland, Oregon, regarding issues with babies and small children that were being brought in with overdoses that had increased, by the way, three hundred percent. I spent a lot of time, I went to several seminars, read everything I could, and based on that, I am against Canyon Lake having any, I'm for this ordinance and against Canyon Lake having any kind of participation in commercial, particularly when I found out that the only place that legally anything could be placed would be across from, in that building that's on the highway on River Canyon that's adjacent to the fitness center. JDI Dance is directly above that, and the parents bring their children in and drop them off there. I have been involved with granddaughters going there, and I would not want a marijuana dispensary in that particular spot where the children would be subjected to seeing it, and, and those who absolutely will come and congregate in those areas. Everybody I've talked to in cities that have had issues with dispensaries have had the same problem, and we would have it too, so I am definitely against it.
Amen. Mayor Pro Tem Warren, please.
Well, those of you who know me have been bored to tears with this subject for quite some time now, because every time I'm out, that's what we're talking about. Every dinner I've gone to, every party I've attended, Oktoberfest, this was heavily discussed. I've received many emails and many letters and phone calls. I think the, the best, best thing that Canyon Lake, in my opinion, that we can do right now is to adopt a wait-and-see attitude and see what happens in six months to revisit. And I wanna tell you why. It's not, I'm not against the, the use of cannabis. I really don't care one way or another. I don't, I'm not drawn by the money for Canyon Lake. I don't personally think it's ever going to be seen, so I don't think that that's a bright, shiny enough object to sway it. As councilmember Green said, it's a, it's not necessarily a good fit for Canyon Lake. It's certainly not a good fit in the one place that it could go right now, but it's not a good fit necessarily for Canyon Lake. I'm not speaking only on my own behalf. You have to understand, when I'm talking to people, I'm taking notes. And I've had, when I receive, and I have received a lot of people saying that they don't want this near the dance studio, my response back to them has been, okay, if not there, do you want it next to you? Do you want it down the street? I heard from people in Lake Elsinore, then do you want it in your neighborhood? I don't wanna base this decision, it's an important decision, and I don't wanna base it just on the fact that it might, you know, go next to this one particular spot. I wanted people to tell me how they felt in general, if they want it in their backyard, if they want it in Canyon Lake. And I have to tell you, I had one person say to me, yes, I would welcome it, and overwhelmingly the people just don't want it. As the people's representative, at least some of them, I have to go with my heart and with their hearts and say that it's just not right for Canyon Lake.
Well, at the risk of being repetitive, I'm not gonna be, because what the, what Mayor Pro Tem was talking about is exactly the type of discussions we've had. Multiple, when I say multiple, emails and letters and visits and talking about this subject. And quite frankly, I cannot find one person that is a citizen of Canyon Lake that wants to have this particularly right there, where near JDI Dance Company. So, but I heard it on Facebook, and I read Facebook only because I try to keep track of what's going on in the community, people say, well, it's okay, but just not Canyon Lake. Well, I find that kinda interesting. If it's not good for Canyon Lake, why is it okay for the next city over? I don't know. But, anyway, I find that kinda interesting. So, my position has exactly what the Mayor Pro Tem and, and the other council members that have made their comments, and one thing I would like to have a decision tonight, I don't think there's any reason to delay this until November and into December, because there has to be a decision by the end of December, but why put our citizens through this two more months? I don't see any purpose to doing that. So, let's, when it's all said and done, let's decide either we're gonna ban it or not, and then let's move forward. So, that's my thoughts. So, you wanna go through all these?
Pardon me?
You wanna go through all these?
Do I wanna go through all of them?
Yeah.
It's not my job. It's, I just wanna listen.
So, do you wanna wait until they say?
Well, yes. I'd like, I'd like to wait till it comes time for the vote, if I may.
Marvin Webster? And if I pronounce the name wrong, I apologize. I think I got it right that time.
No, it's Webster, like the dictionary.
Oh.
Marvin Webster, live on twenty-nine, three ninety-nine Vacation Drive, mayor, visiting council. I'm opposed to a medicinal marijuana dispensary located within our Canyon Lake community. I think it's much too easy to shift, excuse me, from a medical dispensary to a pot shop recreational store down the road. I think that if it's medicinal dispensary, then it should be located in a hospital setting, not some for-profit storefront where people can go with their super-easy-to-obtain doctor's prescription, which they can get from one of the local doctors in Lake Elsinore. For decades, we've taught children in schools to just say no to drugs. This certainly goes against that by making a really bad example, making it socially acceptable. We have police actions already against people with a DUI, driving under the influence, it no longer says driving under the influence of alcohol, but it's driving under the influence of any mind-altering drug that includes marijuana and so forth. We used to hear that marijuana is a gateway drug. We don't hear that anymore, perhaps. It's not politically correct, I don't know. But we do know that marijuana can become addicting, and I just don't want it around. So, let's not make it more socially acceptable by locating a dispensary in or even near our community. Thank you.
Okay, Brian Buck? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and others. Although I did learn at early age how to count, I have a pretty good idea where we're going, but I think it's just important to hit the high notes, just to make sure. As a father, homeowner, and actually a lawyer by trade, I am challenged by a city, not this city, but a city that might consider what it can't control. You can't control the future, so if you allow something in, even by proclamation of possibility, you can't control what happens next. So, if we say, well, it shouldn't be next to JDI, then it shouldn't be next to anything, 'cause tomorrow, I don't wanna hurt anyone's business here, but a large business might go out, and there might be a more appropriate spot, someone might say. Right now, no offense to anyone who needs medical or what have you, I believe if you drive seventy-four, you'll find lots of places from here to the two fifteen. It's easy to obtain, and bottom line is, it's California. We individually may not have voted for it, but the people did. And so, in that sense, the concept, to me, is troubling, because I still believe there's a federal law that conflicts as well. But bottom line is, for the city of Canyon Lake, I mean, I had a lot of notes about you need to study and evaluate and look at the pros and cons. I think you've done that, and I'm really pleased to hear that from your council. The fact that we're taking a, or at least looking at taking a full-on ban provision, I'm supportive of it. I assume you've looked at that legally as well. To talk about JDI or that location, I think others probably will, I would just say, to have a business of this sort as the first thing you see after you see the beautiful new sign that says, welcome to Canyon Lake, is a bad idea for business. It's a bad idea for real estate. It's a bad idea for my family. Ultimately, there are alternatives. If there were none, I would say, well, we have to think about it. We live in a large county, and as we know, the county is vacillate on the issue, but I think we're gonna know soon, or at least we may have known soon, that there are alternatives for people. 'Cause this is not about medical. This is about the future of recreational, and that's very important that people understand that, that recreational businesses are gonna be very different. The type of clientele is not someone who has a medical care card, it's anybody. And bottom line is, I hate to say it's not good in my neighborhood, put it somewhere else, but it will be somewhere else. It just shouldn't be in my neighborhood. Thank you all.
Anna Maria Simon?
Hi.
Was that close?
That's it, you nailed it. Before you say anything? Yes. Sorry. Thank you so much for leading our pledge of allegiance. That was the most awesome moments, Missy Girls. You set the pace. You set the patriotism. Very good. Okay, so I'm not really used to speaking, you know, to all these people, so bear with me. Okay, so my family and I strongly oppose any kind of marijuana shop. Having this kind of shop would increase traffic, people speeding, bringing, bringing in outsiders that do not belong here, questionable people, panhandling, people loitering about the parking lot, accosting people for money, potential holdups and carjacking, bringing in more unnecessary, sorry, bringing in more unsavory characters with intent to rob neighboring communities. A quote from a police chief in California, whenever you are dealing with drugs and money, there's going to be crime. If people think otherwise, they are very naive, end quote. About one percent of the population commit crimes, the majority of that one percent use illegal and legal drugs. When you sell a product that people used to get high regardless of its medical purposes or not, the majority of your customers will be involved in some sort of crime. There is a reason why marijuana, sorry, marijuana shops have guards with or without weapons, extra doors, cameras, and that panic button. When you have armed guards, that screams you're in a potential war zone. Some supporters of marijuana shops say there is no difference between a marijuana shop, marijuana shop, and right aged CVS grocery stores or gas stations. No, these shops are not the same as marijuana shops. There is a major difference. Marijuana shops know it's a fifty-fifty chance every day for themselves with their customers to get robbed or involved in a shootout. Let's face it, marijuana shops are not in business for the few legit customers. They're in business for the ninety-nine percent druggies to make money. That is why they're risking everyone's lives every day. It's about the almighty dollar. They don't care if their souls rot. There is no positives about having a pot shop here. There is no confusion or misunderstanding what problems these pot shops bring with them. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, the next is Todd Chisholm, and I must mention that he's from Willamar. He's not a Canyon Lake citizen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Todd Chisholm. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. I actually am a former Canyon Lake resident- I had, I was fortunate enough to get three and a half acres in Willamar and move kind of to a family compound that I can now ride my motorcycle in and out my gates and not have to worry about it anymore, never have to bother you guys again about it, okay? Bottom line, I'm here, just so you know, I am actually a marijuana cart holder, okay, for medicinal use. The reason I have this is for actual medicinal use. I'm actually in favor of collectives and people being able to get medicinal-use marijuana. Here in Canyon Lake, around JDI, I don't agree with it. And the reason being, I'm going to give you two testimonies. I'm not going to give you a bunch of statements and facts and statistics that everybody uses for their own ways because we know it's political, and you can point in any direction you want. Here's a fact. When I was 12 years old, my family, I grew up around a bunch of pot smokers. What did I do at 12? I started smoking pot. Pot is indeed a gateway drug. There's no question about it. It will lead to other things. It led me down a road of being incarcerated over 20 times by the time I was the age of 20. That's because I went from smoking pot to meeting other people that smoked pot, to meeting other people that smoked other things, to doing drugs, and I became a methamphetamine addict. It's not something I'm proud of, okay? I'm lucky to be alive to this day. Luckily, I came out of it. I'm a very successful entrepreneur. I have a very great, wonderful family, and I'm alive today. I don't, I just don't have anything to do with drugs anymore, but pot led me to it. The reason I'm bringing that up is because my son started smoking pot at the age of 16. I didn't think it was a big deal. Hey, it's okay. Don't worry about it. By the age of 23, he graduated from marijuana, smoking a lot of marijuana, to smoking heroin for the second time, ODing and dying. The fact I bring that up is because our kids are susceptible to this, whether we think about it or not. And whether it's in JDI or next to JDI, whether it's in the Canyon Lake Community Center, the fact that kids around this community are going to walk around, they're going to see that greens, that green plus sign, or they're going to see something that's indicating that there's medical marijuana usage, and they're going to think socially it's acceptable because they get hit from everywhere they can nowadays, whether it's Facebook, whether it's Twitter, whether it's every social media outlet, whether it's on TV, they're going to see that, you know what, marijuana is okay. Fact is marijuana is not okay, okay? If you want to smoke it when you're 21 and older and use it recreationally, do I believe that it's probably better than alcohol? Absolutely. And I will wrap it up. But the point is that our kids don't need to be susceptible to it. They don't need to see it. They don't need to be driving in and out JDI Center every day, going to try and, you know, become sports or doing whatever they want to do and become dancers, and then see a marijuana shop next to them every day. That's going to hit them in the head eventually, and they're going to say it's okay. And those little few children, okay, when they get 12, 13, 14, 15, they might just be thinking, "Hey, there's been a pot shop next to my dance center for 10 years. It's probably okay to do this." Chances are, there's a few of them that are just going to go off in left field, and it's because they were introduced through marijuana. And that's all I want to say, okay? So thank you for your time. I just don't think it's a good thing for your community, and it might be my community someday down the road, too. Fair enough?
Okay, Carla Von Bargen?
Hi, I'm Carly Von Bargen, and I'm the owner of JDI Dance Company. I had a whole thing to say, but as I can tell, you guys have been inundated with emails. Since the last meeting, we did start a petition, and we have over 2,100 signatures here, and my office has been flooded daily with Canyon Lake residents whose kids don't even attend JDI coming in to drop off petitions. So I was here tonight asking again that you just protect the 800 students we have that are there Monday through Saturday. So thank you for your time.
Of the 2,100, do you happen to know approximately how many are Canyon Lakers?
I just counted these before I got here, so.
I know, I meant to write to you.
But I can find out for you, but it was a lot. Most of our business out of the 800 students is, the majority is Canyon Lake residents.
Okay, and I wanted to thank you. This is a person who took it upon herself to make a difference in her community and for the children of the community. Wherever we stand, or wherever I may stand on the issue itself, I have to give great respect for what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
And by the way, the children that go to the JDI Dance Company are 18 months to 18 years, so they're all below 21. And so it's just another good reason. Okay, Michelle Taylor?
I am a Canyon Lake resident, and my kids have also been dancing at JDI since 2009. Having listened to each of you speak, I feel comfortable that marijuana dispensaries will not be allowed in Canyon Lake for now. With that being said, please declare JDI a sensitive-use facility so that in the future, if this ban is lifted, our children and JDI's future are not at risk. Thank you.
Anna Cabral?
Good afternoon, fellow council members and fellow residents. My name is Anna Cabral. I'm a representative with United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1167. We represent over 18,000 members in the region who work in retail, food processing, meat packaging, medical, distilleries, pharmaceutical, and the cannabis industry. So our union family has been very proud to help lead the development and stabilization of the emerging cannabis sector nationwide since 2010. We already represent thousands of cannabis workers in multiple states, and we believe that the cannabis industry can offer local communities jobs with strong wages and benefits that can't be outsourced. So that's why we're here today to ask the council to pass an ordinance that would allow for commercial cannabis in the city. We've been partnering up with good and responsible employers whose goal it is to provide good jobs in the community, that would also hire within the community, and that would provide good wages, medical benefits, paid time off, vacation, holidays, and even pension benefits. So we know that these types of jobs are available in the community, and we know that when this is available, workers will stay local and shop local, and so that's something that is vital to keep our community afloat. So wherever cannabis is legalized, the UFCW is committed to building a successful industry with a thriving, diverse, and skilled workforce. We have, as UFCW, also have resources for the council. If there's something that the city is concerned about, please reach out to us. We are here and would be more than likely, or happy to work with you and help in any which way possible because we already work with workers in highly-regulated industries. Finally, I did want to highlight as well that we, as UFCW, have been working really diligently to make sure that we have, offer access to banking, to any industry in the cannabis industry, and so we've been able to do that. So I know that was of some concern, so I wanted to make sure to highlight that. So in closing, I will ask that we would like the council to consider passing an ordinance that would allow commercial cannabis in the city. Thank you.
Okay, we got guests, and I want to continue in the practice if someone's not at Canyon Lake identified ahead of time. One I don't have is Dan Paris. Where, from, what city are you from?
New Orleans.
Are you Canyon Lake?
No, Los Angeles.
Okay, so here we go. This is the first from, by the way, the lady that just talked was from Ontario. This is from Glen, California, Justin Sibley. Shively.
He spoke to me.
Yeah.
Hi, Justin, welcome back. Thank you, Harry, tonight. Thank you, council, for having us all here tonight, discuss this issue. My main point is education. I hear a lot of concerned parents up here. I totally understand. This isn't an issue, whether it's going to be here or not, no matter what, we have to educate our children. We have to educate them not to abuse things. We have to educate them not to abuse alcohol, food, relationships, every different aspect of life. It's our responsibilities as parents to make sure that our kids become loving, caring, hard-working people. Marijuana's not going to make the difference. Alcohol's not going to make the difference. It's the home. It's who's standing at home telling their kids right from wrong, whether it's next to their dance studio or not. Educate your kids. Educate them, do not abuse. Do not abuse substances. Do not abuse anything in life. Don't take it for granted. That's all I really got to say. Have a good day.
Okay, the next is Chris Egger. He's from Fullerton.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. I actually am here tonight to advocate on behalf of Mr. Shively and his position on wanting to come to Canyon Lake with this type of a property use. A few interesting things that I won't mention at this time. It's funny that in November of 2016 here in Canyon Lake, 2,775 people, or 53.2% of your electorate, voted yes on Proposition 64, which is AUMA. So that means a majority of the voters who voted on that issue here in Canyon Lake actually voted to pass adult use of marijuana legalization, which entitles a homeowner to have six plants within their home. Now, if you ask any fire department right now, right, they're more concerned about the fact that people can grow indoors in their home or in their, you know, in that environment because of the various ways that that can have effect. We're really not discussing tonight's cultivation. What we're talking about is medicinal access, right? And so I've worked with a number of cities in the past couple of years, since the November of 2014. We've seen the city of Santa Ana, the city of Costa Mesa, the city of Adelanto, and the city of San Bernardino, all go through this process, right, of bringing regulatory compliance into the, into the model of how they regulate what is already in the communities. As some gentleman has pointed out, there's black market, you know, that's out there still to this day. There's probably people who sell from their homes in the old model. Then there's people who operate what we consider are called rogue dispensaries or gray-area dispensaries where they're compliant with California law, but they're not actually, you know, compliant with the city's expectations for a compliant business in their community. And then finally, we know that by regulating access, we provide access to lab testing. We provide access to various other elements that are required by state law that create a safer use of the product, whether it be for adult use or more importantly, for medicinal use. There are veterans, there are children with ailments that are across the board in many different ways, that people are using this in a very productive manner. There's people who are not using it in lieu of opiates. Opiates are sold at CVS. Alcohol is sold at CVS. People walk their children through those facilities all the time. They walk them in front of beer and alcohol displays at the grocery store all the time. There is going to be an influence from everywhere around in society. But as we regulate those products, and we realize it is difficult for children to procure alcohol through a licensed facility that does not want to lose their license. When you have a facility that's regulated, what you find in that capacity is that you will have a more stringent oversight of the facility itself, meaning the security guards are there not only to prevent onsite consumption, they're also there to prevent robberies. And as this, you know, has evolved, and you're hearing now that there will be access to banking, which means access to credit card transactions, really, because as businesses are able to process their transactions in that manner, they're allowed to do that. Now ultimately, the decision will have to be made by the community, and as representatives of the community, I think it's important for you all to feel that you make the right decisions, but without the appropriate information. The reason that San Francisco is not implementing immediately licensing, which they already have for medicinal shops, is because of the social inequity, where there's not enough minority representation in the shop owners. So you have to get specific to why it is that things were prepared. And I'll also close on this, which is in Colorado, those who are using cannabis under the age of 18 have decreased since they have in place regulation. I think it's important to recognize that. But thank you for your time tonight, and of course, if there's ever any questions that I can answer, I have a lot of information and resources available to me. Thank you so much.
Let me ask a question. You don't have to answer it, but you mentioned you're associated with Justin Shively.
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Is it, can you develop, are you the attorney for him?
No, I work, I work for the Longwith Group, which is part of his representation. We've worked with him in the city of Santa Ana. So Mr. Shively has two licensed facilities here in Southern California. One is in Santa Ana, and one is in Paris. And during that process, he's been vetted by, you know, law enforcement through the live-scanning process. He's had to structure corporate entities and remain in compliance. My job specifically has been on the political front. So I work closely in Adelanto and Costa Mesa and San Bernardino on those fronts, but I am here tonight representing the team that works for his attorney.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Okay, Chris. Did I do it? This one. And it's from, I'm sorry.
Natalie asked for me to speak on her behalf. She's a little nervous. She came here tonight with her daughter, Gianna.
Oh, she's from Costa Mesa.
She doesn't want to make it a hostile appearance this evening, but her daughter's been a medical cannabis patient for two years.
And I use the legal dispensaries in Santa Ana. I have Justin's involvement.
Yeah, I don't think the medical use is what we're.
Well, but what I wanted to say is, and if it's her time, and I'm going to speak on her behalf really quickly, is that we hear a lot about children and how this is something that really can't be of a benefit or be around children, but when you see a child like this who didn't say mother or father until she was 11 years old two years ago, right, when she started these treatments under Dr. Bonnie Goldstein from Children's Hospital of Orange County, right? And she's become much more cognitively developed. She is much, 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 much more animated, but more importantly, she went from having a seizure every 10 seconds.
Every 10 seconds.
To having maybe 90% reduction. And that is also something that Dr. Thomas Minahan at Loma Linda will talk about with his daughter Mallory. It's also something that has been talked about by parents of Charlotte Figgy and Dr. Sanjay Gupta on many, many things. So to characterize and demonize marijuana solely as a, as a child-endangering substance is almost at this point in modern society with all the informations out there, but I wanted to bring you firsthand recognition that children are actually being saved by this product, right?
I actually, I actually get it delivered, and I actually go into the legal dispensaries because they have changed in carrying the oils that Gianna needs. Sometimes I can't get it on the weekends, and I have to go down, and they have like the lab-tested oils that we need for my daughter. And so I actually have gone in for the first time in my life into a dispensary, and it wasn't like what I thought it would be. Like stereotypically, I thought it would be, you know, like what you guys are describing. But it's actually clean, it's actually very professional. I take Gianna in there with me, and I understand you guys, like, why you guys feel that way because I probably would feel the same way you guys did if I didn't have Gianna. I probably wouldn't want it in my city anyway, but I drove three hours to be here just to tell you that I am so happy that it's in Santa Ana. And I think there's parents like me that probably feel the same way. But just don't come out here.
Your daughter is taking it, this is a question, not a statement, for medical reasons, right?
Yes, yes.
And that's, that's not part of what we're voting on today?
I think it's accesses.
It's access, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I still use, even though I get it delivered to my house, I still sometimes have to go into the dispensary. And so I feel like if it's accessible and you carry the right products and have the right people in here, I think it'd be good for people like myself that have children like this.
So if you, you're from Costa Mesa, right?
Yeah.
So you would come over to Canyon Lake?
No, I'm just telling, we, I, there is a legal dispensary in Santa Ana that we helped. I did the same thing I've done here, is we helped them get legal, and so I'm just saying it's, there's, and now I'm using Costa, Santa Ana. So there's probably other people in your surrounding areas that probably would use these dispensaries the same way I do Santa Ana.
She's doing this in support of Mr. Shively.
Yeah, because I know the type of products they'll have in his store. So they're not going to be, you know, something that, something I could give my daughter.
Sure.
Yeah, she's darling.
Yeah, she is.
Randy?
I hope I explained myself. You did very well.
So Jean Diller, and she's from Debonshire.
She's on Debonshire. Jean Diller?
I live in Hemet. Yes, I live in Hemet, have family in Canyon Hills. Anyway, I just wanted to say, I'm a mother of five kids. I do work in a legal shop. I've looked, worked in illegal ones and legal ones. I can tell you there is a big difference from all the regulations you have to do. There has to be odor control. I mean, come in for inspections, your inventory has to be on point. You know, it's not just a Wild West out there like everyone's thinking. My kids come to visit me at work. You know, you have to be 18 in Paris, 21 in Santa Ana to even be able to walk into the front door. So it's not like kids. So it's not like kids can just be running in the parking lot and then just all of a sudden be in their store and they can go shopping. There's actually a waiting room that has to be buzzed in for you to get, get back, so there is layers of protection. Also, I just wanted to say, a lot of people are reading things off Facebook about the, you know, all the different things going on. One person did put on there, everyone knows the dance studio should move, not for the dispensary reason, just because they're too big for that parking lot as well, and they cannot handle that amount of people for that location. I don't know if it's true, my kids don't go there. I did look at the parking lot, they say they have 800 members there. There's about 40 to 50 spots, that's including the fitness center as well. So just, what's to say in a year or two from now, you guys vote no just for us or any other business in that area, it doesn't matter, they move. So now you don't only have them, you know, there, you have no business there, no access to the tax revenue, which I know you guys say you don't know if you'll see it from the state, but you definitely would see it with the city because the city tax would go directly to you guys. That is something that we have to pay every month, at the end of the month, on the 30th. We have to walk it into the city ourselves and pay it, so I know it is getting there. We have receipts from, you know, Santa Ana, so I would just hope, you know, not, you know, not just say no to us, but just keep it open and, you know. I'm not trying to make everyone be a customer there, I'm not trying to change your views on whether you think it's okay to use or not, I'm just saying try to give people access in a business in a good setting that people could, you know, use.
What is your interest in having this dispensary in Canyon Lake? You keep saying us, are you part of the business?
Yes, I'm a manager.
Is it Green America?
Yes, so I work for all the different dispensaries, so yes, that would be one of my shops that I would, would work at.
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
But, you know, we do, like I said, we do hire local people, too, so all the people in our area, we do try to get people to work in that area. All right, thanks.
Okay, I, I think the last one is Dan Perez from LA. If I miss one, let me know, because I try to get everyone.
Good afternoon, thanks for having me. I'm retired Los Angeles Police Detective, work for the City of Los Angeles. I'm for the industry, I do not use any medical marijuana or any marijuana. Also, too, I do not use alcohol either. But I, the, the reason I'm advocating for it, because it's creating jobs. In the City of Los Angeles, there's 134 permitted dispensaries, and there is about a legal, about 1,000 illegal. But there is, I did not bring the data with me, but Department of Justice, if someone would like, I could bring you the statistics, crime statistics, says the crime around, the 134 permitted legal shops, crime has gone down. The City of Santa Ana has permitted 20. Out of the 20, 14, 14 of them open. I provide security at 11 of those dispensaries. What I brought is Article 40 County Registry, says the city anticipated making 1.1 million, they're on target for a 3-point. Also brought, too, with City of Los Angeles, who will have their regulations created, hold this in time November, brought the Los Angeles Times article, they're on target to make 50 million. This is from Forbes, the City of California, they're on target to make $1 billion. One other thing, too, is that if you do not allow marijuana, I know you say, I overheard you say you're just sitting and wait. If you do not allow the dispensaries or cultivating, manufacturing in your city, then you're not entitled to the tax revenue. If you do make $1 billion, you are not entitled to that, and the reason being is because when the retails or cultivators or they pay the tax dollars go to the Bureau, Bureau Cannabis Control. And so I guess, and it's, it's logical, because if you do not collect taxes for, for the Bureau, then you're not entitled to that, that revenue. Again, I'm having it because it's creating jobs. I do not use alcohol, I mean, use marijuana or alcohol, and that's another thing. I think it's kind of ironic, how come we are not out shutting down 7-Elevens? If you look up the Center of Disease Control, 51, every 51 minutes, someone dies to alcohol-related cause of alcohol. Last year, 47 teens were killed in alcohol-related incidents, but yet we're not running around shutting down 7-Elevens. We're not shutting, running around, how much alcohol is in our parent, in individuals' home right now? And here we're concerned about marijuana, whether we like it or not, it's coming. I feel we should just regulate it, and, and again, I think it's just, it's parenting skills.
Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you, what is your interest in having this in Canyon Lake? Do you live here, do you have relatives here who will benefit from having a job here in Canyon?
No, but I could probably create employment for someone within the community.
Okay, so what would you get from having one in Canyon Lake?
I'd provide a security guard.
Okay.
Probably live with the community.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anybody else in the public that want to speak? Can you bring a request up real fast?
I have one up here, you just put your name on it.
All right. Can you just say the name?
Matthew Spenson.
And is he from Canyon Lake?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Oh. Good.
Mr. Mayor? Counsel, yep. My name's Matthew Spenson. I live at 330 Spray Drive in Canyon Lake. Okay. Couple of things, I, some of you know me, some don't, but I moved from Colorado five years ago, so I was there when it was becoming legalized, and I saw a lot of the effects that were going on and some stuff that's happened. In Canyon Lake, we're kind of a unique, very unique city, in my opinion. We have city council, we have POA, small chamber. We also have a water district that we work with a lot. So I would just caution you, like, when we start thinking about this, just don't make it a city decision. We have relationships that have to be built with the water district and different things like that. When they start talking about processing of marijuana for commercial and cannabis and stuff like that, a lot of those toxins end up in our, excuse me, in our drinking water, in our water basin. So I would just highly encourage you, as we move forward into the future, think about all the entities that are involved, and make sure it's a conversation that's open for everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no one else in the public, and I think the Council Member Aaron Krantz was the one that predicted, appreciated having me going through the presentation, which was excellent, and I wanted to get, let, okay, let Council Member Aaron Krantz answer first, please, or give your comments.
Well, I was, I was reserving my comments till it came time to vote, because I thought that would be the appropriate time to say what I have to say, and I prepared for this evening weeks ago. I wrote down some of my thoughts so as not to forget them. That's why you may find me reading here rather than just talking like I usually talk too much. But I've condensed them into what I'm about to say. And voting first, you know, that, that has its advantage sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. Since we're not voting at this moment, when I conclude what I have to say, you'll probably know which way I'm going to be voting. You know, I always say that God gave me two ears and one mouth, and I've listened very carefully tonight to what everybody has said, and some of it has been repetitive. I've heard it before, and I understand why people are saying what they have to say. You know, I've spoken in the past that my concern is always about saving the city, and it still is, and I'm sure that most of, all of my fellow council members have that same opinion. The city is very important to all of us, and I know it is to all the people that are out here in the audience. You know, I've remained silent tonight during all the presentation, and I think I've said this before, but it's better to remain silent, you know, and be thought of as a fool than to speak out and remove all doubt. So I've studied this for, oh, I guess maybe the last two months, and I've heard all of the arguments for and against, and really now, after hearing the presentation of our city manager and our city attorney, and realizing that this ordinance can be revisited, I'd like to be the first one to vote, and I know you haven't called for the vote, but I still would like to be the first one to vote to continue the prohibition of cannabis in our city.
Don, did you want to say something?
I've been making a few notes. Just in the beginning, I want to say, my son had to use medical marijuana near the end of his life because he was in terrible pain. I agree that medical marijuana serves an incredible purpose. I'm not against that. So that's just for the beginning. We had someone mention alcohol. Well, we have alcohol, so cannabis isn't any different. Well, if we had a horrible disease in the city and we had a choice to add another disease, we'd want to add it. I don't see why we need to have two methods of destruction for human beings. One is bad enough. I agree alcohol isn't great, but it's been around since prohibition, so we have to deal with it, we've learned to. But the gentleman spoke about the number of deaths. That's too many deaths, and now you add another drug and more deaths. I don't get the reasoning in that. Also, it was spoken about the access. Paris is going to be legal, there, I'm sure will be other cities very close to us where there will be access. So I just don't, first of all, we don't have an area that's acceptable, so I don't see why access in our little bitty city is important when they can go just a couple miles away and get their marijuana if they need it. And a gentleman spoke from LA. Everybody that spoke had an axe to grind. If they were for it, it was because jobs, money, all these wonderful things that were going to happen, it would benefit them. I don't think those people were really thinking about others than their own personal gain. The gentleman that spoke from LA, I read a report from the police chief of Los Angeles. It was probably, what, about 20 pages? About that. There wasn't one positive thing to be said about the marijuana, that the problems that they've been dealing with. And crime isn't going to go down. All these wonderful things that people are claiming aren't going to go down. They will increase, and if you, I talked to the police chief of Long Beach, we talked to the police chief in Paris, we read the report from the LA police chief. None of them had positive things to say, and these are the men that work with that and the problems involved with it every single day. So I just wanted to point those things out.
Okay. With all that said, I'd like to have a motion.
I move.
You move?
I move that we keep our ordinance. I don't even have to add with the option of reviewing it later, because we do have that option at a future time. So I just move that we maintain the ordinance that we currently have banning any kind of use of commercial marijuana.
You need to move that we adopt, that we do the first reading of Ordinance Number 176, which is a revision of, it has the effect of continuing your mandate.
I direct, I move that we direct staff to notice the public hearing to introduce Ordinance Number.
No, we don't need a public. Just say we want to move that. You introduce that.
Okay, I'll get it right. I would like to move that an ordinance of the city, the council of the City of Canyon Lake, amending Canyon Lake Municipal Code, Chapter 9.03, to meet the requirements of the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, updating and continuing the prohibition of commercial cannabis activities within the city.
Second. Okay, then we have a roll call.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
I thought I already voted.
For the record.
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonner?
I'm going to vote, but if you can stand, or one more minute, because I want to make a comment after, after I vote, okay?
No mass exodus?
No. Yes, I vote for it. Okay, I ask the citizens of Canyon Lake to think about, we should disincorporate this great city and become part of another city, and in the most likely, would it be on either east or west of here, of 100,000 people? 12,000 people are small potatoes to their number in those cities. So the reason we want to keep a city is because we're able to go to these agencies, we have a chair on the table, and we're able to protect our citizens. And so I hope, when the decision comes up again, should we disincorporate or not, I think people, I hope people will think this thing well, very well. With that said, thank you, and.
Take a break?
Good job.
Want to say we're taking a break? Before you wander off, you want to say we're taking a break?
Oh, we're taking a break. I knew it was gone.
He was already gone. He was gone before she even got up. Why don't we just adjourn now?
I'm.
No, I think we're waiting. Yeah, yeah, that's right. I'm.
You're welcome.
Well, no, I'm going to. That's true. Welcome, Mr. Webster. Like the dictionary, right?
Well, we, we, we thought it was going to be, one of the guys that's playing, we're breaking down. Get on one's back.
I know. 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 I know.
So, if you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Mayor, you said the mobile estates, there are some people that apply up there. Are the people that are applying are the ones that need upgrading heaters, HVAC systems?
For the most part, for the most part, it has been roof repairs.
Okay.
A lot of roof repairs. And I believe, I think in the past, I think what we've, what they were doing was, this program was, was, for whatever reason, promoted more towards the mobile estates. This past year, we've opened it, or this past year when I came on board, we moved, opened it to all the residents within Canyon Lake, so long that they qualify, because part of the program is they have to meet the low income requirement, so, but to answer your question, for the majority of it has been roof repairs.
Isn't there a good portion of that that's gone to people in the mobiles?
It has, yeah, I think for the most part, I think most of the applicants have been from the mobiles, yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion to approve 5-0.
Okay, going to 10.3.
Okay, tonight I have before you a discussion for city council to potentially approve an increase to the city's current approved Christmas tree lighting ceremony, budget of $1,000. Staff is recommending increasing the budget to a total amount of $4,000 to cover additional lighting and services for the ceremony. To kind of go over this, at the June 20th city special meeting where we approved, city council approved the budget, we approved a, city council approved a budget amount of $1,000 at that time to cover the costs to handle the, the install and the dismantling of the, the lighting that we do for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony over at the Veterans' Memorial Park. One thing that I kind of wanted to point out, since the beginning of fiscal '16 and '17, the city's general fund has seen expenditure reductions due to grant awards that I've been receiving for various city projects, and that, that include, I've included many here, it includes the entry monuments that you see on Railroad Canyon, our annual website renewal, that's something that's also being covered through our grants, something that we have to, the dental fund gets affected. The BLM study that was done with Forma, I think at the time before I had got here, was also covered through a grant that I was able to receive. The buoys that have been put out in the lakes over the, the north end to cover the city boundaries in the BLM area. For fiscal '17, '18, now that was '16, '17, for '17, '18, we've already received notification for doing some new projects, also grant funding too as well, that I've received to cover city projects such as the radar street signs that I'm looking to replace, the ones that are not working right now. Putting a monument over on Getz Road, if you recall, there's sort of a, kind of a standard sign that's out there, I wanted to replace it and put an actual monument, because we do get a lot of people that come in and out from that area, and that maybe people don't realize they're coming into Canyon Lake at that point. And also to the continuous of the annual website renewal. So, in total to date, from these past two fiscal years, including what '17, '18 would bring, I've, I've been awarded, or we've been awarded, I should say, the city Canyon Lake has been awarded, $76,000 towards all these city projects, which, if you recall, at one time, when I think when I got here too as well, city had allocated $30,000s to do the, the monuments, and fortunately, the grants were able to cover that, so it was a huge expenditure reduction to the city's general fund. So, the concept for the additional funding is to continue the enhancement of the lighting of the, of the Veterans' Park, to, to just include, because what we kind of did yesterday, last year was just a big portion of it, but we wanted to sort of kind of conclude what I was sort of envisioning from the very initial concept of what I wanted to do for the Veterans' Park is to add the additional lighting, and that was, that would, that's where the additional funding would go towards, so.
Mike, is that going to be an ongoing additional thousand each year, or is that a one-time thing, and then we go back to a lower amount?
Yes, no, I, I think that thousand will be an ongoing thing every year, just because of the amount of work that goes into the installation and dismantling of all the lighting.
Well, is your presentation done? Because I want to ask a question.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed.
I'm very interested to hear the response, can I get a, response from Don? Don's question, was it, was it just for the thousand, or are you asking about the four thousand? Okay.
It was just, yeah, for the thousand, that's just the install and dismantling, unless we do it somehow in-house, but I just don't see that happening anytime soon, so, unless Aaron can do it. Yeah.
By the way, thank you for, you're the, the grant guru for the city, it's just amazing the amount of money that you've been able to find, good job.
Doing my job for the city of Canyon Lake, that's all, so.
What, Mike, I got to tell you, I'm a little disappointed on the staff and two council members, including one of the two, that we had a finance committee yesterday, and it should go on to the finance committee and get a recommendation before we go to the city council, and I, I'm just disappointed that it go directly to the city council. I personally, I've seen over the years, we used to do it at the flagpole, it was terrible. Former congressman mayor, three times, he used to be the person that coordinated it.
And that's also part of this project too, if you noticed last year, we did that too.
But I, I think we should increase it to 2,000, and, and, and let's see how well we do next year, I think, just because we saved a lot of money, which I agree with Don, we've done a remarkable job saving money, but just because we save money, it's not a good reason to just go spend more money.
I understand.
And so, I would be comfortable in increase, or to make it from 1,000 to 2,000, but beyond that, I think unless we take it back to the finance committee, I don't think we should be voting on it today.
So I'm confused, are we not voting, you want it brought back to finance?
Well, if, if the, if the council would agree with 2,000, increasing from 1,000 to 2,000, and that's the motion, and it would pass, that'd be fine, but if not, then I think we need to take it back to the, but I hate doing that, because now we're going
to be, now we're going to be in, well, no, but now we're going to be in November, and
that's pretty close.
Yeah, it was too close.
Yeah, it is kind of too close, and I think that's why I brought it to, to council, for that reason, is because we're, we're so short for, if you recall last year, we started a little bit late, and I think we started some, maybe the first or second week of December, so I kind of wanted to start this, like, right after Thanksgiving, as soon as we come back, so I wanted it to be a little bit earlier, and that's kind of why I did the.
I think your timing's right, it's just, this is kind of like, follows the line of the chamber, where we went from a certain amount down here to up here, and then we kind of came back to see where we're going as far as the amount. How did you come up with the 4,000?
Well, 1,000 obviously to cover the install and the dismantle, 3,000 just for any additional lighting, any additional services that maybe we can have, maybe hiring a Santa Claus to be out there. Correct, correct, I mean, it could be lower too as well, I mean, so it was just, it was just more of an estimate, as to maybe, you know, I'm kind of, sort of basing it upon the additional lighting, the additional trees that I wanted to get lit up, so it was more of a rough estimate, so.
Well, I thought last year you did a great job.
I, I, I mean, it was, it was very professional, for the short amount of time you had to get
it up, I think it was a good representation of the city and the community, and I thought most of the people that were there wanted to really make it an annual event, you know?
And that was the idea, with trying to increase it a little bit, just to make it bigger and better, and kind of sort of finalize, because once we, we purchase all the lighting, and we're, I'm content with what the lighting that we have out there for the entire park, they're ours, we own those lights, it's, they'll always go up, it won't be a matter of having to go back and asking council for additional funding to, to cover anything else, it's just, will be the $1,000 just to cover the install and dismantle.
So this is just a one-time increase?
Yes.
Now, I think I could support the 2,000, and seeing where we go with this year, if it looks like we need to increase it, then that, I mean, that's very appropriate, but to go from 1,000 to 4,000, yeah.
So I'm going to make a motion that we pass a budget adjustment from the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, from 1,000 to 2,000. Is there a second?
Well, I'm feeling a little over a barrel on here, because I, I really support this event, because I really wanted to have it, and be all it can be every year. Sorry, I very much support this event, I think that it was really good for the city last year, and I think that it will have even more people coming out. So you're suggesting, he asked for one, he asked for four, we have one, you're asking for two, can we split the 3,000 and, difference and make it 2,500 instead of 4,000?
Sure.
Okay, just because I, I mean, you know, we'll split the difference, I know what you want, I, you know, I know. Is that okay? We'll split the difference for now and see what happens.
I'll see what, you know, what I can do with the additional, that additional mountain.
Is there a chance, like, if you, when you're setting it up, if it appears that you really could use or should get more lighting, or if you rent at Santa Claus, it costs more, or somebody to play music or whatever, could we increase it, could you do it through petty cash or something, and then be reimbursed by raising the rate? I mean, is there some kind of an avenue of you're being able to spend more if you need it?
I, I've done an initial walkthrough with the installer out there, and we pointed out the additional lighting, he's supposed to give me an estimate, this was a rough estimate, so I can see what that additional 1,500 would do at that time, and then we can kind of go from there.
Because I would really, I, I agree with Vicki, that in the past, I always thought it was a little on the tacky side, and I really think it would be nice to have it really classy, and have more lighting, and have a bigger event, I think we would really get more people if we did that, so I'm, I'm all for spending a little more money, I think that's a major event.
And this year I got the chamber that's going to be helping and supporting, and they're going to be involved too as well, so.
I would suggest 3,000 instead of 2,500. We're going to get it up there. And of course, you don't have to spend it all.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Well, okay, Jordan?
Well, you know, I'm the one that likes to spend money every now and then. I, I agree with Vicki, and then some, I think to showcase the city is what we, what we're always trying to do, and we don't want to do something that's halfway, and it's an investment this year that'll carry over for the future years, so 3,500 or 2,500, or whatever the number is, I'm for it.
So do you want to make a change then?
So if you want to make a motion, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to.
Well, Randy, Randy made a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a.
Randy made a motion, so he would have to withdraw that before you make one, or you could amend it.
Amend it.
Yeah, okay. The amendment, and Randy accepted the amendment. Okay, well, accept the amendment.
The second, accept the amendment.
Where's the amendment?
The amendment is at 2,500. All right, we'll go to 2,500.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
I'll make a second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Bonner?
Yes.
Motion to approve an increase of $1,500 to the budget for the Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, city manager comments?
Nothing else, Mr. Mayor, but just a reminder to the council, as you guys do your council comments tonight, if you have any additions for future agenda items, to please let staff know tonight as part of your comments, and so we can make sure that we include those and get those done in a timely manner.
Okay, so, Jordan, you want to go first?
Sure. As always, I'm going to make it a little shorter than I planned on, I know there are people at home still listening, but some of the, some of the stuff is quite lengthy and too detailed, but I'm going to skip right to my vector meeting, and it was an interesting meeting last month, a little off of what we usually talk about, but this is a cancer pen that lets doctors spot tumor cells in seconds, and I thought it was quite interesting, and something that should be passed on, and I'll give up my time on all the rest of my reports so that I can read this in its, in its entirety. And this is a tool that might one day allow more complete removal of malignant tissue, less time on the operating table. On Wednesday, September the 6th, 2017, a new, this was in the Health Daily News, "A New Cancer Pen Promises to Help Surgeons Immediately Detect and Completely Remove Cancerous Tumor, Cancerous Tumor Tissues Without Having to Send Samples Off to a Lab for Testing While the Patient Language Is on the Table." And there happens to be three council members here on this table that are used to some of that procedure. The MAC pin is a handheld device that allows doctors to test in real time whether tissue is cancerous or not, delivering the results in about 10 seconds. "The pen will make it easier to surgically clear out all of the cancer cells surrounding a tumor," explains senior research Livia Eberlin. "In particular cancers such as those of the breast, pancreas, and brain tend to invade surrounding normal tissue. For a surgeon, it can be really tricky because these cells resemble normal tissue. Just by judging it by the eye, it can be very challenging. The pen's accuracy currently stands at more than 96 percent, based on tests that use tissues removed from 253 cancer patients. The new device also could shorten cancer surgeries," said co-researcher John Lynn. "Cancer surgeons these days send tissue samples off to a hospital pathology lab during the operation to see if they have removed all the tumor. But the process can take as long as a half hour, during which time the patient remains on the table and under anesthesia. By comparison, the mass spec pen delivers results within a handful of heartbeats. The device's potential accuracy is valuable as it is easy to use. Most surgeons have had the misfortune of finding out that tissues initially judged cancer-free by pathologists during an operation were later ruled positive for cancer during follow-up analysis. Unfortunately, this leads to the possibility of additional surgery and additional treatments. Having a powerful technology at our fingertips in the operating room would be practice-changing." The single-use pin contacts, connects, excuse me, the single-use pin connects by a thin tube to a mass spectrometer, a scientific device that analyzes the chemical and mass composition of molecules. Surgeons hold the tip of the pin against the patient's tissue, where it quickly releases and then recaptures a tiny drop of water. The droplet rests on the tissue for about three seconds. During that time, the water drops, soaks up molecules from the tissue. Most of our molecules are water soluble, you can get them into the water droplet, excuse me, in a very gentle and simple way, and then send that to the mass spectrometer. Okay, if I continue?
Sure.
The droplet is transported into the mass spectrometer through the thin tube, where it is analyzed to determine whether the molecules it contains appear normal or cancerous. Cancer tissues and normal tissues have very different molecular profiles that we use to diagnose the disease. When analysis is completed, the words "normal" or "cancer" appear on a computer screen. The device can determine different types and even subtypes of cancer, since each cancer produces a unique set of biomarkers that act as molecular fingerprints, sorry, I'll read that again. "The device can even determine different types and even subtypes of cancer, since each cancer produces a unique set of biomarkers that act as its molecular fingerprints. The research team is currently tweaking the design of the tool to further improve it. They hope to start testing the device in a surgical procedures early next year, but it's likely it will be several years before the 10 would be, before the pen would be available on the market. They're looking forward to the pen being tested on cancers that tend to be more invasive and trickier to remove. The current study used best specimens of breast, lung, thyroid, and ovarian cancers to judge the pen's accuracy." So that, that probably concludes my report, unless you want to hear a little bit about the Zika virus? No?
I think we've had enough.
Okay, the mayor says that's enough. Well, then I'll, I'll turn in these other 30 pages later.
All right.
Thank you.
My turn?
Your turn.
My turn. Okay, this is the first meeting I went to the RCA, interesting, I learned about Edelman Oaks, plus other things, so it was quite interesting. Actually, probably the most interesting was talking to the different representatives from the cities, as far as where they were going on the topic we just had lengthy discussions about. Jack alluded to the situation at the golf course and some other stuff that's going on, we are going to be training the staff at the golf course and the Calentry Club on CPR and the UCAAD, and within the outreach to the golf community to also help those folks get trained in the, that particular skill. Also, we had an exercise last month, that we took, last week, yeah, last week, wasn't last month, it seemed like a month ago, that Western Cities, here in Western Riverside, we all came together at Loma Linda and did ELC exercise, so city staff and some of us were there in different roles, we had our partners at the POA there, so it was quite, quite good. Last thing is, I had the city manager, because we've been having some discussion about the costs for our engineering planning, because they seem to be pretty going up, and for various reasons, so we've done an audit, and then we are going to go through the months and pull out the ones that seem to be pretty extensive, such as June, we had a 22,700, 12,000, start adding it up, this month is over 34,000, so we want to cost break it down, hours to projects, because, to find out where our costs are actually going, because if you go back into the earlier parts, as back as September of '16, our monthly costs were 5,000, 4,000, and for, up until we get into April of '17, everything was in the 2,000s, we had one month 6,000, probably due to a project, and then from there, things start going up. So those are the things we're going to look at, and I'll get a cost breakdown on the hours, because the question is, where's, where's our break-even point? So, that's all I got to have.
Okay, councilmember Hagerty?
Okay, I attended two RTA, which is Riverside Transit Agency meetings, just to note that they started in August, the Gold Line, which is a faster route with less stops that begins in Corona and Enson Riverside, and then reverses at the end of the day. It's been amazing, it's a minimum of 15-minute savings each way for those who commute back and forth, people are thrilled with it, and ridership has increased significantly. The other thing they're doing, they're trying to increase familiarity with the various areas that are available to ride by bus, they're really looking to increase ridership, and what they've done, and what I would like to get started in Canyon Lake, they have a training group that will come out, and they've done this in several cities, they, it's, it's been done with senior citizens, but it could be done with people that have younger kids that would utilize the bus or whatever, as you know, we had a 25-cent a ride all summer for young people, and that was extremely successful. They will go to the, the senior center or to a facility where they collect people that are interested, and they will review the bus lines, the stops, where they go, and some of the opportunities for going different places. I was amazed when I looked at the various routes, that you can take a bus on Railroad Canyon, you can go to Walmart, you can go to Menifee, you can go to the outlets, you can go to Temecula, to the mall, all these places on the bus, and what they will do is organize a group, they bring a trainer in with coffee and donuts, they will organize a group, take them as a group on a bus, regular bus, which are air-conditioned and have Wi-Fi and, and plugins for your phone, by the way, and take them all to a destination. They suggested that a holiday shopping at Temecula Mall might be a good, good thing to start, and they help everybody, show them how to, you know, where the bus stop is and how everything works, and they take them there and then bring them back. They're hoping that by educating people, that people, if they're more familiar with the buses and where they go, they might be more comfortable utilizing those, and a lot of older people that can't really drive that much, and we can catch a bus right in front of the town center, they can park at senior center and walk across the street and get the bus. So, I'm hoping, I've contacted our senior citizen chairman, and I'm hoping that we can get a little training session going for perhaps a holiday trip to either the outlets or the Temecula Mall, and they provide this for nothing, just to get you familiarized, so I'm quite excited about, I think it would be a really good thing for Canyon Lake, we have a lot of people that can't drive anymore, and they're pretty limited in their ability to get out, and this would be a wonderful answer for that.
Two quick questions, are you going to go to the radial, radial drive and drive a bus?
Pardon?
In the rodeo?
No, not.
No? And you had mentioned earlier that the dial, dial service, service was getting better? Is that?
Yes, yes, they have significantly, they, they completely revamped it, they had enough complaints, they, that they have completely put a, a lot of measures in place that have corrected the problems, and it's significantly better than it was, they have very few complaints now.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, I'll keep it short, as Nancy mentioned, Nancy Horton, the alum treatments went well, no hitches there, everybody got hit, it was wonderful. Animal Friends hadn't had a meeting until tomorrow, so I'll talk about that next time. I'm wondering though, did you ever get the figures for how much 60 goes outside our gates? I was heading towards Menifee, I was past Hawn, and there goes our, I go, wait a minute.
I haven't, I haven't received that report yet.
Okay, how do we get that? I really think that people.
I've already, I've already requested from the battalion chief, and so I need to follow up and see where that is, yes.
Okay, can you do that? Because I think, I think that would be pretty interesting.
I've been asking for it for over a month, I wanted to make sure, and actually, I want that part of our monthly report saying, okay, how many times were they first on scene outside of the city?
Tomorrow at my meeting, I might be running into a mutual friend of ours, I'd love to have those figures.
Okay.
So, let's try to get those as soon as we can, thank you.
Okay, I went to one R, R, RCTC Budget and Implementation Committee, meeting.
Okay, I went to one RCTC Budget and Implementation Committee meeting, and then also there was, first time I think, and maybe ever, they had a joint RCA and RCTC meeting. And it was very interesting because how much had to do with the conservation affects the transportation roads can be approved? So it was a really good discussion, and it was a presentation of both sides, and then the directors were able to ask questions, so it was really good. I went to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. The initials spokesman, speaker, Keystone, was very good. The second one was not quite that good. But the, the thing that's interesting is, is breakout sessions, and they have different subjects, and you learn a lot just dropping in and listening to what the, they usually have a panel, and then they use, have some questions from the audience, so it was a good deal. I mentioned about the student of the month, and I'll be doing that for the next couple of months, for sure. And finally, I just want to tell you, I learned something in the last two weeks that I never thought I'd get so much information, but I want our citizens to know, when you have an ambulance, and unless there's specific conditions, like traumas or burns from, burns, or there's a couple, three other categories, you have the right to decide if you want to go to Inland Valley or if you go to Loma Linda, Marietta. And quite frankly, if you go west to the 15 to Clinton Keith, or east to the 215 to Clinton Keith, it's about the same distance. And so I've talked to the general manager of AMR, he's very open about it. He's going to come in November and make us a small, five-minute presentation and give us some information relative to that. But I want our citizens to know they have that right to make that decision unless they fall in that particular category. All said that, I think we can adjourn, and the next meeting is November 1st at 6:30 for open session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
2,500.
You know I could have gone more.
I know.
I almost did just because of the best plan. Oh, I played nice.
Good job, man. Have a good cruise.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
I could tell you about the birds.
There you go. I'm telling you, I actually enjoyed that committee.
I do, because it's a, it's a, what I enjoy about it is a whole different way of thinking, you know, and.
Stephanie, you just leave it here?
Yeah.
Okay, back to you.
Right.